I'd like to call the Linmar School Board Regular Meeting to order at 5:00 in the boardroom. Will you please call for a quorum?
Here.
Eisenberg.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Maury.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Walt.
Here.
And Weaver.
Here.
Quorum is present at 5:00.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. At this time, the board invites the public to speak on items related to the agenda or district. The board will receive and acknowledge comments, but will not engage in a dialogue with the speaker because of the set agenda for the meeting. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker. Remarks should not contain names or other identifying information about students, teachers, administrators, or personnel. At this time, if there's someone who is wanting to speak, make sure you've signed in and you may step forward.
My name is Matt Rollinger. I have two children in Linmar District. First, we need to clarify something that was said by a board member at the last meeting. We were told that you are in a voluntary position. That is not true. You are in an elected position. When you took your position, you took an oath. And that is very important. That is a very important distinction between a voluntary position and an elected position. Twenty days ago, I sent every single board member here a notice with six questions because I was told that you would be willing to work with anyone. How many responses did I get to that notice? Absolutely zero. But in doing so, I gave you 20 days to answer those questions. And if you didn't, you all agree that you do not have the legal authority of those six questions. I'd like to bring them all up here, but I don't have time, so I'm going to bring up one in particular. Question number three on your notice. Do you have any legal authority to mandate a quarantine to anyone for any reason? We are all in agreement that you do not. In your proposed return-to-learn plan, you have stated student and staff members exposed to an individual in their household who have tested positive for COVID-19 will be required to quarantine. This could potentially mean for a total of 24 days to meet criteria, blah, blah, blah. You do not have legal authority to quarantine anyone. And you admitted it with the notice that I sent you. Before you motion to pass this, before you second a motion to pass this, before you vote to approve this, think about what violating your oath means. Every one of you, think about what that means. And if you do pass it, and then it gets implemented, think about what it means to the superintendent of this district if it is done illegally. There's no reason that I should send a letter to every board member and not get a single response. And you wonder why we come in here and we're angry and we yell. It's because you are not hearing us the way that you want to be told our questions. When I come in here, I get a response. Last time I got a response because you heard me. And if you think ignoring me is going to make me go away, you are sadly mistaken. So before this gets passed, think twice about doing it. I suggest you go back to the drawing board and figure it out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has comments?
Please, thank you for speaking. My comments, as per...
I know. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you. Please make sure you've signed in.
Hello, my name is Susan, and I am a parent of an incoming kindergartner. I am a former high school science teacher, and the first thing I want to say is thank you to the district for all you've done over the past year to help manage this pandemic. I'm sure if I described the work as difficult, it would be a massive understatement, and I appreciate all of your hard work. My husband and I have been watching the developments, both of the evolution of COVID and of our nation's mitigation efforts, and we were truthfully devastated to see House File 847 signed into law last spring. Kim Reynolds repeatedly talks up the idea of parental choice, but I think choice implies that we have an option we feel good about, and I don't see it that way. My choices are to send my unvaccinated child to a mask optional classroom against the recommendation of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control, or keep him home and deny him the social kindergarten experience that he was so looking forward to. It's my opinion that the decisions made at the state level are based upon politics, not science, and not in the best interest and safety of our children. I know at the district level right now, your hands are tied. I get it. But I want to encourage you to keep fighting for changes to be made to the state mask mandate ban. And furthermore, I want you to consider what you'll do if there are legal challenges made to House File 847, as has happened in other states. If House File 847 changes, I beg you to follow the guidance of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control and protect our children with masked classrooms, particularly for those that are not yet eligible for vaccination. I know some may argue that COVID affects a smaller portion of our children in a less severe way, but what if that was my child, or your child, or your neighbor's child? Nobody wants to be the exception. It's our job as adults to use our scientific understanding and protect our most vulnerable. And we can't forget that the actions that... We cannot forget that our actions have repercussions for the entire community as our schoolchildren leave our classrooms. One last thought. It's my observation that sometimes those that oppose masks speak louder. But I want to be clear that there are those of us out there that are willing to make sacrifices like a mask to follow the guidance of those that are experts in their field and protect everybody's families. The only way out of this is if we work together for the good of everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Sullivan. I have three children in Linmar District. I'm also a nurse. I've been a nurse for the district, in fact, and I've been a very big supporter of this district. I've lived out of state, and I moved back. Made a conscious choice to move back to the Linmar School District because of our great... The great respect that I have for our district, the great success that our school district has always achieved, the highest standards. And I would urge school board members here this evening to get back to education. Let's try to set politics aside. Leave... Obviously, all of us know there's a pandemic going on, but I think that Linmar District needs to get back to what it does best, and that's education. And... Last minute of thought, sorry, my son is calling. He's trying out for the golf team right now. He's finishing up his round of golf. So I didn't have anything prepared, but I really would like you guys to just get back to education. And that's really what I wanted to say. I couldn't reiterate it more. Just... I'm sorry. I should have had been more prepared, but... And the comments here tempted me to get up and voice my concern. It's not just the children that are fearful of COVID, that are missing out on school experiences. I'm sorry, Susan. But my daughter missed out on her second grade year because of the opposite reason. I didn't want her to be in school masked all year. The masks are recommended based on an emergency use authorization. I mean, blah, 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 right? We all know. We all know these things. And we all can produce a study that shows what we want it to say. I'm looking at you. We're all reasonable people here. That's why I'm urging you to get back to education. And I think that should conclude.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
Hi. You might remember me from last time I was here. I did call out anybody who would force a mask on a child, a coward. I also said that you were just putting tyranny and fear into the children. Well, what I saw recently is that you were going to enforce masks on school buses. How petty. Because you've got to have control over something. You don't deserve this authority. You don't deserve this power. Anybody who would do that, you don't deserve to be within 100 feet of a kid. Now, we made the difficult decision, which some parents are having to make. We pulled our child out of this district, but we still pay for this district. This was our district. But we won't send them here because we won't let people like you have any authority over them whatsoever. So we made the difficult choice to homeschool. Now, I'd like to see, and I'd hate to see more money spent on lawsuits or any money spent out of my pocket for a school in lawsuits to cover the stupidity of forcing masks on kids. So I might be loud, but I'm also intelligent. I'm also smart. I pay attention. I'm logical, and I care about America, freedom, and liberty. And I encourage all of you, all of you, to be smart as well. Now, if you're going to force masks on anybody, please don't go use the CDC. Stop. Don't listen to the CDC anymore. They are not your God. There is a Jesus Christ. The Constitution should be what you're answering to, not the CDC. I didn't prepare any remarks today, but I just want to let you guys know again, we are watching. And I hope that anybody who would force masks on children, especially vaccinations on children, that you remove from office. And I hope that's done. That's it. We're watching.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you for saying thank you this time.
That was not necessary.
Protocol. Say thank you. That would be necessary. Aren't you not supposed to engage?
Follow your own rules.
Anyone else? All right. So we will proceed. Informational reports, discussions, presentations. First, we'd like to hear from about the Indian Creek Trail Project.
Kesha's getting set up. Just a quick reminder for board members. This has been a project that's been in the works for several years. Kesha may have been here three years ago, roughly, something along those lines. I've had a few new board members since then as well, so this is somewhat new information to you, but it's not a project that hasn't been in the works for quite a while. So with that, it was a good time to give an update as the city continues to work with trails throughout the city and one that potentially impacts with us. So Kesha, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Shannon. Hello, my name is Kesha Billings with the City of Marion, Associate Planner in the Planning and the Community Development Department. I've got Lacy Lampy here with Snyder and Associates. She is the project engineer here as well. So any technical questions? Lacy will be happy to jump in and answer any of those. So what I'd like to present today is kind of where we've come in the last couple of years. And so what you can see is the overall image of the Indian Creek Trail. And my apologies, it's a PDF. It's a pretty long trail, so I think 2.3 miles. So roughly down here, if you look at the bottom of the screen up here, is where the hand is. Right past, so 8th Avenue, and then you go up here, and then there was a new pedestrian bridge installed a couple of years ago by the Parks Department. I say a couple, it kind of flies. It could be five for all intensive purposes. But so down here, and so where it comes with the Boyson Trail. Well, the Indian Creek Trail would kind of veer off to the north and east. And what we saw... Let's see, this would be 2019, that the underpass was done under Central Avenue there. That was also for flood purposes, so any flood backup that could be caused by the undersizing of this bridge would go in there. So it was a two-pronged approach there for that. But you'd see the underpass there. It comes down south side of Lininger Park, comes up to Boyson Road there, and then it hops... Hops on the side path at Boyson Road. Once you get to 10th Street... I don't know. But I dodged. Get back there. Whoa. Good.
That's okay.
Do you... I will only touch the mouse. No heavy hands here. So we'll pick you back here. And so once you come up 10th Street, there's also a side path on 10th Street as well once you cross 10th Street. There's going to be an at-grade crossing there, and so you're going to see those push-button activated crossings at 10th. And then you will come back into city-owned property, cross underneath 29th Avenue. So ideally, grade separation is what we'd like to see. So under the bridge at 29th Avenue, come up. The three culverts that are there just southeast of the campus here would be replaced with a clear-span bridge. So any damming that you typically see with the culverts with flood events would be eliminated or drastically reduced. And then, so coming down from the parking lot, there's a pretty sizable hill, so we'd stay on the bottom side of that hill, come up and around, and then get onto some private property up in here. The idea was to get into the trees, stay off of the open clearing there, and then come up and then reach up towards Tower Terrace up here, where again, there's eight-foot side paths along Tower Terrace as well. So this is one of those that we feel is a connection from some well-established trails. And if anybody's seen news, newspaper, city, Facebook, anything, you notice that we just opened up a bridge over Indian Creek as part of the C-Mar Trail Project. And so this will be well tied into that. So I mean, this is a great connection for the community. Once a bridge over Tower Terrace gets complete, not definite date on that yet. No, still working on the funding for that. But again, this would even be a further connection into East Marion as well. So I've got some other exhibits that I sent. So that's overall plan. Linmar is a piece of that plan. And so what we've got through here is, you know, this is kind of, I mean, if you're engineering at all, you know, so this would be like the standard bridge. You've got buttments on both sides, clear-span railing. And so the intent is to take down the chain link that would be there and just do more of a standard bridge railing to accommodate that. And then I also included some of the plans as they pertain to... So this would be cover page, as they pertain to Linmar Properties. It's all the little pages through there. And so this is the intersection coming off of 29th Avenue. You come up where the former concession stand would be. We tie into that, and that's where the bridge, the culverts, would get replaced in there. And then you see it come up and along the creek, on the west side of the creek. And just, I mean, hugs, like I said, it kind of hugs that bottom line of the practice fields and then gets into private property over and through there. Didn't get in too far, but enough to have that community feel of you're in Marion, but the idea is to have a trail that's outside of the vehicular traffic, outside of the pavement that we've come to know and love today, whatnot. And then, you know, small culvert up there, and then this would be Tower Terrace Road. So this is kind of upside-down as far as the world is, so... So yeah, and then some more alignment images. So those were, I believe, all included in your packet. So if you have any questions for me or of Lacy, yes?
A concern about the bridge. I know that the cement tubes, when they first put them in as Hunter's Ridge got to be developed, a lot of the brush came down, and that what caused most of the flooding. And we went to the core engineers, and we did everything that we could. Is that going to be high enough so that we don't have any more flooding problems because of debris coming down, especially after we've gone through this deratio and everything that has happened, to have that push down there and then covering the field and almost entering the bottom half of Indian Creek School?
I believe the clearance would be roughly the same.
If you go to that bridge...
Next one.
So you can see the water line. So the 100-year storm event is basically in the rail. So that means that the supercharged storm events that we see, just every once in a blue moon, so that means the water level would still go only to that height. So it will start spreading over the land at that point. The whole point of the single span is to make sure that everything gets opened up and that that brush can go underneath. You'll still have periodic maintenance concerns, but it'll be so much better than what you have right now with those single pipes.
There's no doubt about that whatsoever. My second question would be, on the trail, is it going to be a cement trail? And is it going to be a wide enough trail that you can get bikers as well as walkers so that we can get families from different, you know, categories of bikers versus walkers? Is it going to be that wide enough to do that?
So this was a funding award from the local Metropolitan Planning Organization. So it's federal funds that are funneled through that we have. It's 80% federal funds. And the trick to that is you abide by their rules. It's 10-foot wide, hard surface, so it's either concrete or asphalt. In this case, it's concrete design.
Okay.
So 10 foot's the minimum. Ideally, we would have acquisitions wrapped up here shortly, and then we can get on to final design, submit those to the DOT. Ideally, we'd start spring construction with that. Even DOT process is, even when you have your final design done, you submit them to the DOT, and then it's still a two-month process to even get it to their letting. And then depending on construction schedules or any tie-ups. Right now, steel is kind of the big holdup on some of our infrastructure projects. But that, all withstanding, ideally, a spring construction. I think design is readily available to be all hands on board to get that through.
And then, once the trail is complete, who handles the maintenance of the trail on Linmar's land? So we just let you put the trail there, but you continue the maintenance, and we don't have to take that over?
Yes. And that's the nice thing about the easement is, so 10-foot wide, we would be responsible. So anything, any one of our trails is maintained by our Parks Department. So snow clearing, Parks Department, mowing. So it's a 30-foot wide easement. Ideally, you have 10-foot for pavement. But then that five to six to eight, depending on the mower deck that they use, would be cleared by Parks Department as well. So all of that. The bridge, again, would be, it's on your property, but it's still our baby to maintain. When we apply for funding, we assure the planning organizations, state, federal, whoever you want to say that we assure, we maintain that for at least 20 years. That's one of those catches as well.
Those were my two questions.
What are the plans for, like, illuminating it? The trail?
Currently, we don't have lit trails. Think of Boyson Trail, C-Mar Trail. There's some lighting at parking lots, per se.
Right. I'm wondering, you said, you know, when we talked about like who takes care of it and all of that, but who would be liable should something happen on that trail that is on our property?
That's one of those things. I don't have my attorney here with us, so I'm going to do my best attorney hat. And this is numerous easements that we've gotten for other trails. It's just kind of that standard statement. It would be our liability insurance. If it's someone trespassing on your property, obviously, that gets into someone being where they shouldn't obviously be.
Right.
Type of thing. But on the trail, I believe that that would come towards ours. It's, your easement is...
I think I'd want to know that for sure. I think I would turn it away and...
Those are my recollections from earlier conversations. We could certainly go back and verify that and double-check it.
It's a permanent easement, so we are actually... It becomes their property. It's no longer Linmar property at that point. It's city property.
Okay. I think I'd still want to have an attorney give that confirmation.
I think we have.
Yeah, we've...
I think so.
We got a nice hefty packet from the city a while ago to go through all the potential gift transaction pieces as well. Had our attorney look at that. I don't remember anything coming up from a concern, but we can certainly verify that as well. And you brought up the question about lighting. That was a concern at the board table, I remember, several years ago. And I understood that concern at the time, but honestly, since that time, that wooded area has really thinned out a lot. Some due to just lost some trees naturally. And then a year ago today, really did a number on that area as well. So the safety concerns aren't quite as much, in my mind, as they were several years ago. We've talked about that, too. It's, there's not a lot of trees left there to clear, unfortunately, but... But this is one of the few situations where that may help the process, but.
It's a it's a given to take, you know, in the in the right of way areas. We do have trail lighting up 10th Street. Side paths are going to be put in on 10th Avenue this summer. They're going to have that trail lighting when you when you have that right of way. You just kind of have that that bleed of of light or whatnot. And I guess in some places, you just want it a little bit as natural as you can be when you're in Marion, so.
Any other questions? Thank you for coming and telling us all about it, the update. That was awesome.
Shannon, I will check with Kara Bullerman, our city attorney, and have her re-verify, send you the wording that I can I can read it with my mind, but it's all kind of a little blurry right now.
Good. We can follow back up on that. And then next steps, Russ will come back to the board for kind of final action if needed at that stage then, too. So so it's been a slow process, but it should move pretty quickly now, which is exciting to finally see this coming to to action.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Kesha.
Thanks so much.
Do I need to sign this or if I'm on the agenda, do I?
You're on the agenda, see you.
You're good. You're good. Next, we have our online learning model. Associate Superintendent Bob Reed.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back in front of the board and reporting on online learning and the possibilities for this upcoming year. Tonight in my presentation, the basic overview is just maybe a step that'll look back to last year and how our students performed in the Family Choice Online Model. We'll talk about our current enrollment as of today. We'll talk about the Edmentum Learning Platform, the learning process and some support that goes with it also. Well, stepping back to last year, when we had our Family Choice Online Model, which was kindergarten through sixth grade, I compiled some data from the ISAP, which is the Iowa Statewide Assessment of Student Progress. The district aggregates are our grade level performance by all schools at that particular grade level. The Family Choice students are a part of that aggregate data, but I did separate them out as far as the students that were in the Family Choice Model at the time of assessment. As you can see, the the ISAP breaks it down to not yet proficient, proficient and advanced. And I listed the Family Choice Online Students, followed by the district at the different grade levels. So this is our performance for English Language Arts for last academic year. This is our performance for mathematics. And again, just as a reminder, only the ISAP starts at third grade. That's the first year that our students take it, or that's the first year that it's taken statewide. I was very pleased to see that we're right in the ballpark with the different methodologies that were used last year, whether those were hybrid onsite or when we're completely online at the height of the pandemic last year. And then everyone in third through sixth would take ELA and mathematics. It's grade five is when we start our science instruction, and that's the way the numbers came out from last year. I think back to last year and I just want to give kudos to the online staff for all their hard work and dedication to make this happen. But then again, also, we knew that our online process was a school parent commitment also and a partnership. And so thank you to all the parents out there that supported your children all year in the Family Choice Online Model. Between the two entities, our dedicated teachers, the dedicated parents, we pulled through with some really nice results. So I'm very, very pleased with that. Thinking about this upcoming year and thinking about our enrollment, in our first enrollment window, that ended June 1st, that's when that was shut off. You can see our breakdown by educational level with 22 students in our elementary, 10 at our intermediate, 16 at our middle school, and then at that time, 22 students were registered for the high school. So as we're thinking about this, there's basically, it all falls under the Edmentum umbrella, but there's two different programs that fall within that. For our K5 students, they will be using what's called Calvert Learning. And Calvert Learning will supply the core work for the students. Just a general idea, and these were taken right off the web that Nathan put on there earlier during the informational period. For our K2 students, it's about 3.5 hours of work a day. For third grade, around four. And then for our fourth and fifth graders, about four and a half. Calvert ends with a project or it embeds a project based learning theme through all the the curriculum that's been learned. So if I'm, let's say, learning about fractions, the students won't gradually nibble on that until at the end they have a project develop that demonstrates their knowledge or working knowledge of fractions, just for an example. At 612, we're going to use Edmentum courseware. And one of the nice things about our online experience last year is that we did use some Edmentum courseware with our sixth grade students. And the sixth grade students that used it found it easy to navigate. There's a lot of nice features to it. There's a notepad. All the tools are built in as far as calculators, graphing calculators, anything that you may need from sixth grade up. There's some reading tools also, some immersive reader type things. There are some translation tools. And then there's something that they call guided notes that kind of outlines what students should be taking notes on as they work through this. As we're thinking about Edmentum, either at the K5 or 612 level, the learning process is self-paced. So we have set the start date and end date for each semester. And every time the student would be logging in, it would give the student an update on, I'm on pace, I'm doing exactly what I need to do, or I'm ahead of pace, or perhaps I'm behind pace. I need to to do some additional work to make sure I stay there. Both programs, I would say, especially the Calvert with our lower elementary, heavily relies on parent guidance. There's a lot of great things on the Calvert because it will give parents teaching notes so that as the students go through the materials, it gives the parents a good idea of, hey, these are some things I should be looking for. They also supply some town halls or some other informational webinars that parents can attend. All courses, whether they're Edmentum or Calvert, are aligned with our Iowa standards. There's mastery at the end of each lesson. Students would take some type of exam. And as I've mentioned earlier, there are many interactive features on both platforms that kids can use to benefit their learning. This year, because of our enrollment, we're going to use staff provided by Edmentum. And these are Iowa certified instructors. These Iowa certified instructors also provide life help sessions. Let's say I'm in fourth grade and I need some life help. It may be an instructor that I interact with on a regular basis, or I can look at a schedule and join a class where there's a life help session that fits my time schedule or my family's time schedule for that. So there's a little bit of flexibility with that. They will notify parents if the students are falling behind pace or if their performance is not where it needs to be. I'm also included in all those as supervisor of our online program. And from a tech integration standpoint, we also have Michelle Lake, who is an innovation coach just this year. And I need to apologize to Michelle. I just realized only one L in Michelle and I'm picking myself for that. So sorry, Michelle. She's going to be available to help with registration and technical support that families may need to make sure that we're integrating the the learning in an appropriate manner. With where we're at in our state and with the transmission that we're having right now, I know June 1st seems like a long way, but there's been many different changes to that. And we want to provide parents options to educate their children. So we will open the registration window again, August 10 through 16th, and that will reopen to families. So if they are interested in pursuing the online option, they can certainly sign their students up for that. It's not too late to register. Even we might have a week or two delay in getting them into the Edmentum system, but that still provides ample time for them to stay on pace and finish the assignments they they need by the end of the semester. So we just thought that would be good to offer families that opportunity. Some of the questions that I've had, too, is let's say I start online because of mitigating reasons. There's multitude that a family could choose from. Would we be allowed to come back onsite? And we'll take those at a case by case. We'll examine those. And of course, we'd like them onsite and in the classroom, interacting with with the teachers that we have here. So that is not out of the question. Other questions that I've was asked just even today, will this reopen again? And I cannot guarantee yes, no, because every time we said something of that nature last year, our plans changed two days later. So we will examine the circumstances and take input from our community inside what what's best for our program and what's best for our students. So I'm willing to field any questions that you may have as we start this endeavor this academic year.
Can you communicate to families who might re-enroll about the, whether it's for the full year or not? Are you being very clear that they have to come and talk to you about? Because I mean, I've had a lot of parents contact me about, well, before this, is it going to reopen? And then, can I just enroll in virtual until my elementary student can get the vaccine?
I've had that question basically asked of me.
And then they'd want them to come back.
Yes. And we would we would work with the family to get them back onsite after that occurrence. We'd really look at where we're at in the school calendar because if, let's say, that happened two weeks prior to quarter change, we might just wait till quarter change. That that would make a better transition for the receiving building and the teacher that might be taking that child. But I'm I I like calling parents when they email because I like talking through those things. And I also let them know, too, like, if you start a quarter off with our online program, but if we jump back into the regular school, the school may have started fractions, Edmentum may have not. So there may be a little time to mesh that curriculum, but that's really not much different than what we experienced last year in the Family Choice option here.
And then with, you said that the parents will be notified if a student falls behind and then advised to seek out one of those live help sessions. But if that doesn't happen, like, what concerns me most about Edmentum is the lack of a day, a daily teacher, like a live contact, and that it's kind of up to the family to figure out if it's working or not. And I like I like the idea that they can talk to a live person about certain topics and that it's flexible. I'm just curious about what if a family doesn't take that extra step? How are we ensuring that that student is getting what they need?
In conjunction with the Edmentum instructor, I would provide as much support as I could and counsel the family on what the best options might be for that particular student. We don't want someone to fall behind academically because there's a glitch in the system or there's not something that we can help support them with. If it was like an attendance issue or they're just not logging onto the work, then that's a whole different conversation on on maybe the action that we need to take.
I just have one more question. Sorry. Let's say we get a large influx of new registrations that only want it for the first quarter or first semester until that vaccine or whatever mitigation is available. Have we thought about at all, they all come back, class sizes and do we add sections because of certain, like, have we even thought about that yet? Or are we just going to wait and see what that might look like?
I can jump in on that one because that's a topic we dealt with every quarter last year.
Right.
With much larger numbers than we're talking about here so far. So that was always a worry of those unknown numbers of how many people are going to want to switch one way or the other. We were able to make it work last year. I'm confident we'll be able to do the same thing again this year with smaller numbers that we're talking about so far. But you're right, there is a lot of unknown to that. So it's a little bit of a gamble on whether to do our staffing level in person and the number of people we're paying for as part of the Edmentum program because that is not a free program, something we're paying for to to provide. So there's definitely some estimations. We're doing our best we can to try to figure what that'll look like. But as you know, things keep changing quickly. So we're a little bit of a risk there as far as what that will look like for us.
Those are my questions.
Did you have a feel for, maybe you don't or maybe you do, opening it back up? You think will double the amount? Or are you hearing anything, I guess?
Tim, there's a reason I don't gamble.
Fair enough.
Because I can't look into the crystal ball very clearly. I would say right now, from the contact that I've had since the plan has been put up on the website for people, the Return to Learn Plan and some of the online options that were mentioned there, I would say I've had maybe five families reach out to me right now with questions about it. That doesn't mean there not might not be 50 next week. So I wish I could look in there and and see what we need to do. But I think we do have to be mindful of students transforming both ways from onsite to online and online back to onsite. And that's something that we'll keep working on and keep trying to plan for in a meaningful manner.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
It's Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Next, we have reports on Marion City Council. First of all, I believe, Tim?
There really wasn't, not much. There was a couple, a couple dish on plots that are going to happen in our district that happen every time. So other than that, no, no major things. And not major plots here.
Yeah, but continual growth.
Continual growth.
Is what you're saying?
Yes, continual growth.
Okay. And then we have Rachel.
Yeah, nothing really at all pertaining to the district. Actually, it was mostly just library stuff. And there wasn't even the even the like development. There was only like three things. So nothing for us to worry about.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have cabinet update.
Yeah, several things to update you want as we approach the start of the school year. First of all, construction update. As you know, this was not to be a summer that we had a lot of projects and initial plans. But after the deratio, we had a lot of surprise work that we had to completely fix after patching to get things together best we could last year. That really impacted all of our buildings in one way, shape or form. Really pleased to report that the progress there has gone very well this summer. Just got an update this morning. I think we're in a really good spot across the district as far as everything from roof repairs to flooring needs to be replaced, gym floors. We're really at a good spot across the district as well. We're a little bit worried about that just because of the number of repair jobs we had to do, but also the demand from steel, as you heard mentioned earlier, and then just contractors and workers, too, because everybody's still trying to recover. But overall, feel really good about that. Couple loose endings will trickle into the start of the school year. For example, Oak Ridge Main Gym will be done, but it'll take a week for the varnish to completely seal up before it can be used. There'll be some little things like that. But overall, like, we're in a really good spot. So as long as another deratio doesn't surprise us, we are good to go there. The most obvious one that you may or may not have noticed is Indian Creek Boardables are finally gone. They sat in the parking lot kind of split in half for several weeks. Those are no longer there. So we can see the front door at Indian Creek again. Some little work to do on the parking lot, but overall, looks good. I think most of you know, our staff starts to return this week. Seems early, but it's also exciting to get to that point of the year again. We have new teachers report on Wednesday and all of our teachers staff reports on Friday. So things start to fire up here this week for another new school year, which is which is really good to see. It's something that last year, we didn't get the initial start. We got delayed and it was just messy. So this year, it's exciting to get back to traditional feelings that way. Speaking of that, staff kickoff kickoff event, I think you're all aware, 11:15 at the high school. Love to have you there if you could make it. If you are able to make it during that time, I know work schedules, family schedules may not allow, but if you are able to be there, please sit in the front there so I can make sure to introduce everybody and not miss somebody who's buried way back in the corners of the gym someplace that I can't see. But should be a good event to have everybody there to kick off our start of our school year. Looking forward to getting everybody back in place. And then just the last one I mentioned to you, our Facility Advisory Committee, as you know, have met twice near the end of the school year, took the month of July off. The committee meets again in August, actually meet this Wednesday. Really excited for the work that O P and Architects kind of put together. Last two meetings, we've spent a lot of time on kind of where are we as a district and some individual pieces of the puzzle as far as what we think is priorities. And this next meeting is going to be putting some of those puzzle pieces together. So I think the committee will enjoy that challenge. And then we're hoping, anticipating that, and how far things go that day, it'd be a good time after that to give kind of a midterm update to the board, ensure some things in our community as well as kind of where that group's work is at and where we see that going. So hopefully, we'll get that far on Wednesday. We'll see. But stay tuned for more information to come from that group as we stay on track for our November, December timeline to try to have that group ready to give a full report to the board. So other than that, just excited to get the school year off and running this year. Other questions you may have for me?
Okay, we move on to Return to Learn Plan.
Yeah, I'll keep going. Quick overview for you on the Return to Learn Plan. As you know, the plans have been evolving a little bit over the course of the last several weeks as situation has kind of evolved as well. The plan that you have in front of you or that you've seen, really a couple of key highlights, really trying to find that balance of in-person learning in our schools and also still provide a safe learning environment for our students and our staff, especially the elementary intermediate schools. That was where, as we've mentioned, the vaccine is not yet available for those individuals, at least for the students. Couple of the highlights that I would note in there, just key pieces that we had to work around. There are some legal requirements, Iowa code, we cannot require masks, as you know, in schools. Then there's also a conflicting guidance from the CDC directive as far as masks. We have to require them in buses. So put this in kind of a unique spot of trying to figure out what is best to do. Our attorneys, as you know, have guided us through this process. And so that's landed up with the guidance towards where we're at with our current recommended play-in. The online learning, I won't go through. Bob, just hit the highlights of that. I'm offering that again, and we are going to open up that window for registration for families for a second signup if they're interested. That wasn't our plan back in June, but I think now it seems the right thing to do for folks to give them that option. You'll also notice in there, a little bit of differences from the pre-K 6 to 7, 12 level. Really, the main purpose of that is try to keep the school daytime period protected for our students, keep that bubble intact essentially. So we're not allowing visitors and volunteers in during the school day and at least to start the school year. Now, we hope to have that change made at some point when the vaccine situation changes or we can reevaluate at any time essentially for that as well. That's probably the main piece of the priority difference from elementary and intermediate to the secondary level buildings. Thought that was a necessary adjustment to make at this time until we can make sure everybody is safe in that regard. We did throw out for community feedback, did not get a lot of initial response since Friday. Had some feedback and thoughts as far as appreciate the plans and also some ideas or questions about need some more clarification on this type of, does that mean for volunteers and visitors aren't allowed during the school day? But can we have PTO events in the evening, those type of things? So those are things that we'll clarify in upcoming weeks as we approach the start of the school year. So and in general, our thinking on that is things outside the school day, especially at the elementary and intermediate level are very much optional. They would not be required elements. They're not something that students or families have to attend. So we're leaning towards opening those up as much as possible. Maybe a modified version compared to usual, but trying to give parents a chance to get in, see the school, meet their teachers, try to provide as much normalcy in that regard as possible and still protect the school day. So that's kind of our, our general philosophy on that right now that we know we have some clarification to do on that in the next two weeks before school starts. So with that, I'll open up to questions or thoughts you may have for the board on the draft of the Return to Learn Plans. And let me clarify one last thing. Everything's subject to change. Whatever we agree upon, whenever that is, I know we'll be back at the, making adjustments at some point during this year. So.
Did you say what the window is going to be for that second signup?
Yeah, we're looking at one week window. So if the board approves plans tonight, we'll look at August 10th is tomorrow to run through the 16th or through the next Monday for families. I feel like that gives an adequate time for people to reconsider if they want to make that decision and then still allows us time to make the adjustments from our building perspective too.
Any questions?
Just one is on the meals. I know that we're receiving the funding for free breakfast and lunch for kids. I, you know, I've talked about that for years about being able to push that. I'd really like to see us kind of make sure that that's available for families and that they're aware of it. I don't know how to do that, but and I know putting in there helps, but I just want to kind of state that.
Can I add one thing to that as well?
Sure.
I don't know where this is going to go, if that'll continue for the long term or not. But this could be one of those things that is a positive coming out of COVID, that maybe this becomes the new norm going forward that school lunches are always free for kids beyond this. There's been some rumble into that. I don't know if that will actually be the case or not. We would certainly be supportive of that to make sure every student is fed and gets the nutritional needs that they have before school and are in the school day too. We'll see, but yeah, in the meantime, we'll certainly be sure to promote that that's available again this year, not just for a one-year term from last year.
On the, we talked about quarantine. Does the staff have a number of days, like COVID days like they did last year as well? Does that kind of start clock over or how does that work?
It does not. So last year, there was, I'm going to forget the exact legal guidance on that, the directive on that. We had to set aside a certain number of COVID leave available for staff. That expired, I think it was last December 31st. We extended it through March 31st, if I remember correctly, somewhere in that ballpark. That legal requirement has not changed or has not been extended. So our plan right now is that staff would have their sick leave available for any COVID leave. Honestly, it's very consistent to what IDPH is telling us, treat this as any other illness. We don't have a flu category. We don't have any other subgroup. It's just part of their illness contract they would have available.
And then the other thing that I, you know, I know we say face masks are optional. My viewpoint, I'd like, you know, if we could say encouraged, I think people wear, when they see optional, people don't wear them. When you go to a business and they say encouraged, they may think twice and some people will put them on. That would be kind of my, my thought. I like the word encouraged over optional. You don't have to wear them, but yeah, my two cents, you don't have to.
I agree because, I mean, saying according to the law, they're not mandated, we can't require it. But the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends. That gives everyone all the information and they can make their choice. I would agree with Tim. I think that this is really good. I mean, we've talked about it a lot and I think it's, it's worth clarifying. Tim brought up, you know, the quarantining and the staff. All of that is based on Iowa Department of Public Health. That's not the seven of us making any decisions about who's quarantining. I think that's an important distinction for the community to understand. That's Iowa Department of Public Health. And while I would like to have more of what we had last year in terms of a dashboard and knowing how we're doing as a community, this is what they're recommending and this is what we have to follow, then this is what we follow. Because we're not the experts. We follow the experts who went to school and we're educators, which means we listen to those who spent all of their time getting educated to become epidemiologists and experts in virus transmissions and pandemics. We listen to the experts. And so I appreciate that that is what this plan has done, is it is listening to the experts in their field. The only other questions I have are, actually, maybe down to just one. The masks on buses, that's the federal requirement, right? Because it's part of the transportation, I think I read that.
Correct. It's not the school buses, it's all?
It's all, it's all the transportation. That's why we fall under that federal purview.
Correct. The school buses fall under that, just like airplanes do and other forms of public transit.
I did have a parent ask me, and I don't know the answer, and I didn't have time to ask you. If a student shows up at the bus and they don't have a mask, do we have masks to give them or are they not allowed on the bus?
We will definitely have masks on the bus available for students. We will not send them away.
Okay. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this because I know it's been a lot of meetings, not just internally with the district, but with public health. And it's a lot to unpack and it's a lot to get through. And so I appreciate everyone's efforts and I appreciate that. The pandemic is not over and I appreciate the district administration taking the time and acknowledging that and doing what you can and putting forth a plan that allows us to do everything that we can possibly do to keep our students and our staff safe. Because keeping them safe is how we keep educating them. And that's why we were successful last year is because we sat at this table and we listened to the experts. And that's, that's why we were successful, because we listened to the experts last year. And so I would just ask the community to continue doing that so that this can end. And that is all the questions I have. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you too. I know that we have to, for the state, we have to come up with a Return to Learn Plan. So I do appreciate, I know it's a lot of hard work on you and your team, so you appreciate.
Unfortunately, we've had a lot of practice of putting a Return to Learn Plan.
Yeah, right, right, right.
13, 14 months. But you know, the hardest part this time, I think, around has just been the changing nature of our situation. And we've had some pretty recent guidance from experts, as Britt mentioned, that has made us rethink some things and look at things carefully and make sure where our plans match with that too. And caused us to keep going back to drawing board a little bit. But that's been also at the same time very helpful because they have much better pulse on what we should be doing than, than we do. So.
I wonder, you both suggested the idea of saying encouraged. I wonder if we could use the word recommend. I mean, that's what the medical professionals in our district are telling us, that they recommend. And that's what all of the medical professions over them are saying. So could the district take a stand? We can't require and that's not a requirement. Nobody's going to get in trouble if they wear one. But we could say we recommend it because don't we?
My one reservation with that, right now, it's very simple as far as it's optional. I want to make sure that every student that comes to school and staff member doesn't become an issue of who's wearing versus who's not or a peer pressure thing or a awkward situation for anybody in that position. So that'd be my one reservation because that's something that I know our teachers are prepared for and will have to deal with right away to start of this year, same as they did end of last year when the mask guidance changed as far as how do you make sure the kid feels welcomed and respected in their decision.
That's a fair point. That's a fair point.
I know where your guys are coming from in that part, but my, I'll be careful that if a student does make the decision to go against the recommendation, does that become an awkward spot that would all put somebody into? So that would be my hesitation for that.
I fully respect that. We had a conversation about upping the anti-bullying and having a very frank conversation the first week of school with everyone about, if you're wearing a mask, that's great. If you're not wearing a mask, okay. Everyone is making their choice and we don't need to talk about, to each other about those choices. We just, you come to school, you're doing what you're doing and let's focus on school. So I do appreciate that. But I do like the, this law says this and here's the recommendation. You have your free choice. I do like that still. But I understand and respect the anti-bullying because we had that conversation.
Or could we just include the CDC recommendation along with?
That's what I would like.
You know what I mean? Could we just say masks are optional, period? And the CDC recommends this and just leave it at that?
It's not our opinion. The law says this, the CDC says this.
I mean, because we do have a duty to educate as well, right? Like when parents read that, you know what I mean? The district has a duty to educate the public.
We did a.
A parent reads that.
Can't remember the exact word. We did something similar in the portion about buses as far as the, to kind of explain the rationale behind that and why that's a big difference as far as the CDC directive for that one. We could do something similar on the mask usage in general as well.
Does anyone else have comment? Barry, did you have anything to add to that?
The only thing that I would add and I don't know if it's, if it's appropriate, but to just kind of piggyback on what Britt was saying in regards to as we start up the school, school year and the potential of, of what our policy is on bullying, just to remind people that those that are wearing masks do so on their own volition. Those that don't are doing it on their own volition. And just reemphasizing as a point of our bullying policy. Maybe it'll, if there is any, which I hope there is not ever, 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 that it might curtail, you know, some of that from happening. In other words, instead of being reactive when it happens, maybe we could get out in front of that. It doesn't, they don't have to make it a big deal, but something along those lines that, hey, you know, we don't want this to interrupt people's learning by bullying issues and stuff like that. Just, just a thought.
I appreciate that comment Clark and Britt, but I, I just don't, I don't think. We've been, we've been around this now for a year and a half. You know, we're seeing more and more masks every day and that's 100% choice of the people that want to wear those masks. And I appreciate that. But I think with children, with our youth, with whatever age that is, I don't think we need to put that, make a big deal of it. You start talking about bullying, you start talking about all that stuff. All of a sudden, we're making a big deal of it. I think that's what Shannon was trying to say is, is we don't want this to be a thing where, where all of a sudden you're pointing, you're, you're doing whatever. I think if we just let it roll like it is right now, using the verbiage somehow, whether it's encouragement, whether it's, you know, I don't know if I'd use the word recommended. I might use the word encouragement, but for the most part, it's still a choice. We heard that this evening already and we hear it every day. So I don't know if I really want to make a program the first week of school to make it to brand or really to light either. But however, back to your first comment, I think the plan is set up very well. And I don't think there's a lot of tweaking that needs to be done. That's my opinion.
I don't have any questions beyond what anybody else has had asked and answered already. Thank you for all the work that went into putting it together. I don't have any recommended changes or concerns with that at all.
I feel the same way. I, I think it's well done and I personally like the statement for face masks. And I think it's pretty straightforward and lets everyone know where we're coming from. So I think that's important. I do believe that, you know, a lot of hard work went into this, a lot of thinking it and rethinking. And, and I appreciate all of you that put the time in because it's important. It represents our district and we want to do the best we can for all. So any other questions? Anybody? All right, then we're going to move.
Just one thing I'd wanted to clarify, I guess, is do you want to add that statement in here? Because if we vote to approve tonight, that's where we're starting. And if we prove it as is, we can always go back and approve something later on. But until that happens, that's board action at that point. So that's our next agenda item. So we'll make sure to be clear on what we're actually voting for.
I would like the CDC sentence added personally. That would be my, my choice.
What sentence are you?
That the CDC recommends.
Same as in the transportation section?
I'd be, I'd be happy to make that motion if you're ready for that and add that line in there if we feel comfortable with that.
Is that the consensus? Because we don't need two votes, right?
I don't think you can just pull it right from that section because you have like a federal, like.
No, not necessar, no, the.
Is there somewhere else that?
CDC recommends masks. Whatever, like let's just go to the CDC recommendation and I'll look it up and we'll have the wording.
Yeah, because what's in there currently is more of the directive in regards to transportation. So that would not apply for our school situation.
And the way you have it stated right now.
CDC recommends masking for teachers, staff, students and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. And right after that, it says children should return to full-time learning, which we're already doing.
I, I would be happy to make that motion if we can do that and add that in here.
Yeah, we can certainly amend the motion. That's not a problem. Just want to make sure that whatever we end up taking action on, everybody's understanding of what we're.
Everybody agrees, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Barry. We'll second his motion.
Okay. Please.
Oh, thank you.
That you understand what it is worth asking?
Yes, yes. So we just have, we have guidance from Iowa Department of Public Health on August 5th and we have State Department of Health guidance on August 4th. Big thing is Lynn County Public Health is the one that does quarantining. And our school nurse, and it specifically states, our school nurses do have a legal duty to assist the local board of health in their investigation. And so that's where the quarantining has to come from. It comes from Lynn County Public Health telling our nurses to do the quarantining. And they are currently following CDC. So it is required to quarantine with close contacts. And that's why we put it as household because right now, household is the closest contact we have for those that like.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for that. We have a motion.
Need to get, can you read that again so we can just have it like written down for when it gets added? And so this sentence will go after, and students in grades pre-K through 12. Then you may have to wordsmith the masks however apart, but.
So the face masks, per Iowa House File 847, face masks will be optional in all Lynn Mar buildings for visitors, staff and students in grades PK through 12. The CDC recommends universal indoor, however, CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students and visitors to K-12 schools regardless of vaccination status. Masks are however, an important tool in mitigating the spread and will be available. Just pop the CDC in the middle there and then it says, if you're wearing one, great. If you're not, great. They're available if you want one.
Perfect.
Thank you, Barry.
You all ready?
And that comes from cdc.gov, in case you wanted the reference.
So are we ready? Okay, so we need to vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So you feel like you've got that? Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, we're good?
I'll work within a specific word in to make sure I have it exactly as was proposed.
It's still on my phone, so we can look at it at the end for the voting.
Sure, we're looking that up.
Yeah, we appreciate that. So we're back to the agenda here. Any more discussion about Return to Learn? Anything if you'd like to add more clarification? All right, it looks like we're good. So from that point, we move on to unfinished business. 501, do we have?
Just did that. 502.
I mean, 502, I'm sorry.
We move to approve the resolution appointing UMB Bank NA of West Des Moines, Iowa to serve as paying agent, bond registrar and transfer agent.
serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreements, and authorizing the execution of same.
This is a roll call?
Yeah, just to clarify, the next four motions are the final stages of our bond refinance process. So just to review, the district is saving between 1.8 and 1.9 million dollars from this bond refinance. So definitely worthwhile. So thanks for bearing with this process, because it's, there's a lot of formalities to it, so.
We have like 1.9 million reasons to.
And thank you for being on top of that, so we could do that. That's awesome. All right, so we need a roll call, please?
Buckles.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Okay, 503. Oh, excuse me, I need to say this. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, you guys. My brain's going six places. Okay, on to 503, like I originally said.
I'd like to approve the bond tax exemption cer, certificate as presented and place it on file.
Can we please have a roll call?
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Okay, on to 504.
Move to approve the bond continuing disclosure certificate as presented and place it on file.
Okay. And a roll call vote?
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Okay, all are approved. On to 505.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance and securing the payment of $26,865,000, School Infrastructure Sales Services and Use Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2021 of the Lynn Mar Community School District, State of Iowa, under the provisions of Chapters 423E and 423F of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said bonds.
Okay.
And a roll call?
Maury.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Walt.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Buckles.
Yes.
Eisenberg.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes.
Okay, on to 506.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of the policy recommendations as presented.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Any questions at all? Okay, not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Move to approve the open enrollment requests as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? Any clarification? Is there anything you'd like to say? Okay, we're good. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And carries?
Move to approve the open enrollment requests as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, discussion. Is there any remarks, questions?
Just like to congratulate those people that are retiring. There's four of them. Kevin Riley and Leroy Schmidt, and Krista Stern, and Karen Wilson, for their contribution to the Lynn Mar district. And hopefully they enjoy their retirement.
Thank you.
I just want to mention, like, we're approving Cheryl Klein's resignation, but I'm really excited that she's still staying with us in a new role in the state, the career and college counselor. And I'm excited to learn more about that as a board when she gets off and running, so. So there's a grant program through the state, and it's a partnership between districts and community colleges. And so it's a career and college counselor, and it works directly with students just on the career and college readiness planning aspect of high school. And so she will just specialize in that, but it's a partnership between us and Kirkwood, and that's probably the board for the next time.
You'll still see her around.
Yeah, she's, she's assigned to Lynn Mar, but she technically now works for Kirkwood.
We're very lucky.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm very excited that she is still with us and with our students.
That's a win-win.
Yes, it is. Any other questions, comments? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Get over 20. Okay. Okay, board communications, calendars. We have, Barry, we have you down for the 19th for city council. And next board meeting is the 23rd. Let's see, September 9th. Is anybody interested in doing Marion City Council?
Will.
Okay, Clark, thank you. And we can move on down. Wow, it says September 15th homecoming parade. That, ooh, really? Wow!
Do we have a topic for Lion Learning yet in September?
Had a couple of them in mind, and wait and see how things.
Oh, come on, Shannon, you haven't figured it out.
Yes.
Can we back up just a little bit? Are we, are we gonna, going to be okay to do a board visit at Echo Hill?
As of right now, I'd like to leave that as is, and then we can revisit that as we get closer to it as well. I think that's something we can certainly talk about to get closer. I don't want to change it yet. We'll see how things look between now and then.
Kind of a question, and we'll come back to that. Thanks for giving us a head up, heads up on that. All right, so is there any other communications, anything?
I just want to say thank you to Shannon and Gail at reaching out about Todd Goodell and his family, so.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate that.
Sad news, I know it impacted a lot of people that connected the Goodell family in one shape or another, so.
Absolutely. So, is there anything else? Barry? Okay, so.
Move to adjourn?
Yes. Second, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We need to turn.
13.
Thank you.